I'm going to call the meeting to order. We're back up, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Here.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight, council? Okay. If not, we are going to start with a swearing in, so if... Stand right here, is this good? Do you want us to turn just a little bit? We're good? Okay. So, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Glenn Hackbarth...
I, Glenn Hackbarth...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Iowa...
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa...
...and that I will faithfully and impartially...
And that I will faithfully and impartially...
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
...discharge all the duties of police officer...
Discharge all the duties of police officer...
...in the city of Fairfield...
In the city of Fairfield...
...as now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Great, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we want to welcome you. I'm really glad you're here. And so, if you wouldn't mind, turn to the camera and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, my name's Glenn Hackbarth. I'm originally from Spirit Lake, Iowa. I come from a larger family. I have twin brother and twin sisters. I graduated college and started working at the Polk County Jail before I came here. And I look forward to serving the community and getting to know everybody here.
Great, thank you. Do you have family here with you tonight?
Yes, I have my brother, my mother, my father, and my girlfriend here today.
Great. Thank you for coming and supporting your son. Great, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the April 12, 2021 council meeting. Approval of April 16, 2021 payroll in the amount of $126,173.27. Resolution authorizing funds transfers. Consent of park use permit for Mothers of Freedom, this is a noise exemption. Consent of park use permit for Cafe Paradiso, again, noise exemption. Consent of park use permit for Four Square Church, noise exemption. Acceptance of the library board minutes. Acceptance of the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee minutes. Acceptance of the Beautification Commission minutes. Resolution approving employment in the fire department. Approval of liquor license for Pizza Hut 2, Lunchbox, and Hy-Vee. Approval of total claims in the amount of $181,541.81. We had no claims more than $75,000. So entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Toohill. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Hallie?
Great, we have no public forum appearances tonight. We will move on to resolutions, action items, and ordinances. First is a public hearing on the drawings, specifications, form of contract, and engineer's estimate for proposed street improvements for 23rd, 9th, and C Street paving. Do you want us...
I'll be happy.
Just, yeah, you want to...
I'll be happy, yep.
So what we have for you tonight is the reconstruction of 23rd Street from Burlington Avenue, south to about 600 feet south of Jackson, which is on the south end of the old former Harpold Brush Building. C Street from Burlington North to Broadway, and 9th Street from Burlington South to Washington Street, right there by the rec. We've got the bids to be due Thursday, May 6, and for you to consider them at your next council meeting, your first council meeting in May. And the estimate for that right now is $1.15 million. We've been seeing a lot of discrepancies in the concrete prices, so hopefully it comes in underneath that, but that's where we're at right now.
Okay.
The completion date would be May 31 of next year. We've got 23rd Street set up in phases, so that all the businesses will maintain access throughout the construction.
Okay, great. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak about that? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, go ahead, Melanie.
Two more things. A couple of things to note on this project is, so this is being paid for through Geo Bonds. About 10 years ago, you guys did a large bond package, and so we're replacing that debt with this additional, or with this new debt. Also, on 9th Street, we have included replacing the sidewalks on that project because of its proximity to the rec center. We'll have the bids come in and then look at that specific item, either as part of the award or directly after the award, whether we want to keep that in or out. It was discussed at Public Safety. So, but we went ahead and included it in the bid, and we can always take it out if we want to.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move to the action item. Motion to approve. Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any discussion or questions, council? Not, please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Next action item, a consideration of services agreement with Pathfinders RC&amp;D for preparation of an application to the USDA Rural Development Water and Waste Disposable Grant and Environmental Assessment Report for Step 3. Aaron, go ahead.
Over the last few years, when we've been doing any of our USDA grants and loan packets, Pathfinders has helped us with those packets. So this is continuing our partnership with them to help us with those grants and loan applications.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Rasmussen. Any discussion or questions? Not, please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Next is our resolution, consideration of voluntary acquisition of temporary easement at 1501 South Main Street, Fairfield for Highway 1 Water Main Replacement Project Public Improvement. John?
Yes, this resolution just involves a temporary easement. The business that is referred to in this, as far as the ownership of the building on Page 3, or the site, is actually South Main Building Group, which is a different business entity name, but it's basically principles from French Renneker. Fair comment, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're using our Title 6B eminent domain resolutions on this, not so much that we haven't had complete cooperation from the folks at French Renneker. It's a very reasonable price for a temporary easement, but we'll have some other easements coming back on this strip that will probably have something more to them as far as the 6B parts that we worry about for eminent domain. So, but this is, this is a good start. So, encourage you to consider it.
Great. Council?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other questions or discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to the rezoning to mixed use. Melanie, do you want to say anything first before I open the public hearing officially? Hang on. No, nothing? Okay, so I'll open the public hearing, go ahead. Sue, will you tell us your name and where you live?
Yeah, I'm Sue Burkey, and I own property over in the area that's going to be rezoned mixed use. And I wanted to request that you condense the second and the third reading into both the slots for the next two-week meeting, does that make sense? I've got a contract on my property, and we both want to do it as fast as we can. I want to sell it, and they want to come in, so if you could condense them, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on the mixed use? If not, I will close the public hearing. And we'll go on to the actual ordinance.
Does anyone on the council have objection to moving this straight to the third?
I don't understand the urgency.
The sale of a property that's affected by it.
They want to sell the property, but what's the urgency?
Do they not want to buy it unless this passes? Is that what we're talking?
Well, that wasn't clear.
Yeah, that's, that's the way I understood it, so. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was right. If we do the first reading tonight, and in the next meeting we do the second and third.
I would just move it to the next meeting, we do the third reading, make it final.
Either way, so.
You can, however you want to word it, you can pass the first reading tonight, or you can waive the first reading, go to the second reading tonight, or if you really got felt aggressive, you could actually waive all three, but...
I'm not feeling that aggressive, but we can...
But however you want to word it, you can do that, too. You can waive the, you can pass the first and then just waive the second and go to the third at the next meeting, which is more of a stand...
I'll make a motion to waive the first, and we do the second reading this evening.
Second.
Okay. So, there is a motion on the floor, Toohill, second by Gandy, to waive the first reading and move, and this will be the second reading tonight.
This will be considered the second, then, yep.
Okay, any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, ordinance 1200, consideration of Amendment Code Section 13.04, sewer connections. Again, Mel...
I think the, the motion was to suspend the rules to go ahead and move it.
Now, we have to...
Now, we have to have a second reading.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
It's a two-point, two-step process.
Yeah, sorry. So, so we suspended the rules on the first motion. So now we go to, so now we...
I'll make a motion to pass the second reading.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved by Toohill, second by Anderson. Any other questions? Not, please call the roll.
Toohill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay, now let's move on to ordinance 1200. And this has to do with Code Section 13.04 sewer connections, and these are some changes to this. Go ahead, Melanie.
Yeah, so the main change of this is to decrease the fees associated with existing services. Currently, the total for an existing service is around $350, as far as fees associated with that. We're proposing moving that to zero as part of our EPA compliance order to encourage, or I should say, not hinder people from replacing their sewer laterals. We still have fees associated with new Y, new TAPS, and new service lines, but those are also decreased from the current amount. Maybe a little premature changing this, because as we continue to talk about building codes that may need to be changed, brought back up, but for right now, we're still recommending these fees.
Thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Do, do we know on the proposed fee schedule, on the new, how this falls in line, or what our current one is, or what the, the suggest, or what this is compared to what the new fee schedule may or may not be?
We don't know. The discussions as far as building code is that residential would still be inspected by our current staff.
Locally, okay.
And so these fees would fit within the time that our staff, current staff needs in order to review things. Where probably it would change would be for your industrial and commercial users, which would typically have a larger connection anyway. So that would just be, like I said, that's my guess at this point, is that these, the residential fees might not change very much.
Okay.
But we would see a different for a commercial or an industrial fee.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept second reading.
Okay, so moved by Toohill for the second reading.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other questions or discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Under the mayor's report, the FCC, Fairfield Arts and Conventions Center Board appointment is Sarah Cochran. She's replacing Sue Hucky. I think everyone knows Sarah. She has been a previous board member to the Fairfield Arts and Convention Center, and she's a local attorney, so.
We approve the appointment of Sarah Cochran to the FCC Board.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Anderson. Any question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. Just to let you know, on Earth Day, Sierra Club planted a Pin Oak in Howard Park in honor of Earth Day, so that was, it's on the northeast corner of the square, and thank you to Mr. Hallie for digging the hole, that's the hard part, and Mr. Taylor, I believe it was. And so, that was a nice little event. There is another event also, well, before I talk about that, just wanted to let you know that there's a thing called the Trillion Trees Initiative, and I and some other people did a little math, and if we want to participate as a community, it would take basically one tree per household for the next 30 years to be part of that initiative. And if however many billions of trees, which I can't remember that is now, all over the world, were planted, that would wipe out 10 years of carbon. And trees are a most effective way to help carbon sequestration, so I challenge everyone to plant trees in their yards and out in the country and wherever. We planted three trees at our household yesterday, so. There is another event coming up on this Saturday at the farmer's market at Howard Park at 10 o'clock. TerraCycle is dedicating a bench at Howard Park out of recycled materials, and Stuart Valentine, who's headed up that initiative, will also be announcing a new, a new initiative through the Sustainable Iowa Land Trust, it's called Silt for short. Fairfield Circle Our Cities Project. And really what the Sustainable Land Trust is trying to do is save and protect small diverse farms, particularly focusing on feeding Iowans and having our food be more locally-sourced. And the whole idea of the Circle Our Cities Project is, they have a goal over the next 10 years to find 10 cities where they can get some land where local food is grown for the local economy. And Fairfield really is their first test project. So it's a pretty neat project, and we'll hear more from Stuart on Saturday, what they all got planned. So, if you can, come out and, come out and join us.
At what time is it?
At 10 o'clock. So, with that, city attorney report, John, do you have anything?
So I want to report to you that there's a group of papers coming around that constitute the end of the lawsuit between Midwest Amelants and our Jefferson County 2080 Amelant Service Agency and the individual directors of that agency. So it's completely done. It's off of the court docket, and we're moving along nicely with CARE Amelants. They're doing a nice job for us. I don't know if Paul was going to say something about that later tonight or not.
No, I'll just say that on behalf of, as a member of the Jay Casa, representing the city, we're very grateful for the excellent work done by the team of attorneys in moving this to dismissal with prejudice, which means it won't come back. There were four attorneys, city, county, the health center, and a fourth, insurance attorney, I believe. So they worked very diligently and well, and so we have a very good result. Thanks.
Thank you. Second thing, there's been some nice coverage in the local media about Petrus Park or Parkade. And we're coming into the month of May, it all kind of alludes to the idea that sometime in May it'll be available for public use. There's a few things we've got to do in the meantime. I will be going to the Greater Jefferson County Foundation Annual Meeting in May, mid-May, and having them sign a deed to the city dedicating the park to the city as a public-purposed gift. And that's part of an agreement we did with Alex Stanley and his family foundation two and a half, three years ago. He was here and talked to you then. There have been some delays and so forth, but most of those are smoothed over right now. The place is looking like it was presented to us approximately. And at this point, after we do that with the Greater Jefferson County Foundation, there'll be a resolution you need to consider. I started out with probably a half a dozen conditions in the resolution because we had some things over there that were loose and, so I'll just, I'll mention those because they all seem to be coming together nicely. The owner of Isla's next door to the south was having a problem with drainage. There was an issue about whether the wall on that building was a party wall or not. We pretty much resolved with Ross and Lorraine Walker, the prior owners, that the only part of that wall on the north side of Isla's building that had been a part of Ross's structure that collapsed was the balustrades that go up the side of the building. They supported clear-span trusses for a large interior of the old Pomida Gibson, which later was used as Tribune Printing. So, we don't have a party wall issue. We do have the drainage resolved courtesy of our city engineer working with both the contractor and the engineer-architect firm for Stanley's and with Sharon that owns Isla's. And I've been over there a couple times, too, not just for the food, but basically to see what's in the basement. I think the drainage is pretty well taken care of. We installed a system that drains the slab into a storm sewer that's in the alley behind the shed over there. So if you see Isla's owner, Sharon, or if you go look at it yourselves, maybe we want to show our appreciation to the neighborhood as far as working with us on this. It's going to hopefully be a real positive as far as the whole use for public purposes question over there. We've had some discussion, basically the city engineer and myself, about things that sometimes you have to deal with. It's conceivably an attractive nuisance. I was over there a little bit over the weekend, and kids have already discovered that it's cool to put a skateboard up on the top cement ledges around the planters and so forth. But at the same time, I know the city engineer, in my opinion, is aesthetically, it doesn't look great to have signs saying "Keep Off" or things to that effect. But we'll probably have to figure out a soft approach to enforcing those rules about horseplay. We don't want anybody to get hurt, and there's quite a bit of pretty solid structure over there. Doing half pikes on top of flowerbed cement planters is probably better reserved for activities down at the real skate park in Obie Nelson. So that's one thing we'll, we'll be watching over the next few months, and may have to come back to you, or we may be dealing with park and rec about the best way to manage that, but it is an issue. Other than that, Mr. Stanley really isn't looking for a lot of fanfare about this. I, I'm hoping that the second meeting of May, we have him in here and thank him for what he's done. I don't think he's looking for a big celebration or anything uptown. Melanie believes the architect-engineer would like to have a ribbon cutting, is that right? So, anyway, there'll be some, there'll be some nice things going on, but by that time, we will have in front of you a resolution that acknowledges it as a public-purposed park, and there'll be a couple IRS papers we need to finalize and so forth. So, that's the way this thing is headed over the next two council meetings. Next council meeting, we'll probably set something for a time and place of hearing and adopting an acceptance resolution for the gift. So, I don't know if there's any questions about it, but most of you are very familiar with what it's developed into, and it's a very positive thing.
Great. Can, can we have something posted on our Facebook page about skateboards there? And then hopefully there'll be another article in the paper, we can mention that, too, when it officially gets open. Great, thank you. Committee and board reports?
I have something, I'm sorry, I just thought of it as I'm here. I went to the SEMCO meeting this week, and I just want to encourage anybody in the community that would like to be part of the volunteer pickup. They did one early spring pickup along the highways, you know, as trucks come in and out, they always make sure they're doing that. But our discussion was, we'd like to see two or possibly three throughout this, you know, summer months, those will be coming up. So I'm just hoping families or service groups, or even just private contractors that haul a lot of stuff out there that would want to put in some time, just give your name to the bill sloop at SEMCO, and they'll get you on a list and let you know when they're going to be doing the next one. Be very wonderful to have some volunteers. Thanks.
Thank you. Administrator and department reports.
Go ahead and go to Melanie's project.
To piggyback off what the mayor said about trees, I'll take this opportunity to remind everyone that you do need a permit to plant a tree within the right-of-way. And contrary to popular belief, the city engineer is not against planting trees in the right-of-way, I'm just against having to choose between clean water and cutting a tree down, so, or clean drinking water. So the permits are just to help with the types of trees in the right-of-way. As far as the project update, the two sanitary sewer projects, Step 2 and the wastewater treatment plant, are getting near complete. We'll start to see a lot more cleanup on the Step 2 project over the next couple weeks. Also, city crews are starting to replace a water main on Morgan Avenue, or Morgan Street between Burlington and Briggs. That section of pavement is scheduled for next year reconstruction, so we're replacing that water main and getting it out from underneath the street. I don't have a lot of, a lot of new news regarding the Fourth Street overlay, but I've been in that area lately, and I know people are taking it very slow, and we appreciate that. And we will get that fixed yet this year. That is scheduled for an overlay, and we appreciate everyone's patience with us as we get that project going. And then, also making good progress on the Merrill and Carpenter Street reconstruction. The main line of Merrill has, has already been poured, and so the contractor will be moving over to Carpenter shortly, if not tomorrow. And then, lastly, on the fire station, at the last meeting, we, the city approved an agreement with Klingner. We were working on setting up a kickoff meeting with the task force, with the first meeting discussing the existing makeup of the fire department, future needs, and kind of how we got to this point, also discussing the capital assets and why, and the need for the DOT site, and then, or the reasoning behind purchasing the DOT site. And then we'll be looking at touring the existing buildings in mid-June after the structural analysis has been completed on those buildings. So we're going to... So we're going to keep making progress on those over the next couple weeks. We will be bringing back to the council minutes from that task force, so you are aware what we discussed. And then if you have any questions, pass on to the architect. We will do that. If there's no questions, that's all I've got for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie.
Last week, Friday, I think, John Morrissey and I went over some of the code, or primarily the beginning of the code sections of the book, of our code for review. Most of those are probably the easier ones or the ones that the city, city attorney and I can recommend back to the council rather than having the Public Safety or any of the other committees look at. Tomorrow night, we're going to meet with Public Safety at 6:15 to start that process with the Public Safety sections. Once we get done with Public Safety, my intent is to go to another committee, and I'll pick one out of the hat to go over those sections so that we can get going through the, the rest of the codebook so that we can get that back to Simmer and Cordy so they can rewrite what they sent us and get this finished. Last thing is, is we talked about before the meeting, is the Manufacturers Association has been invited to have basically the exact same presentation that we had last meeting regard, or no, last week, Monday night, at our work session regarding building inspections. So we'll have that at 6:15. It has been published as a work session, so aside from the three that I actually hand-invited council members, you're all welcome, actually. So you can come if you would like.[1771.93]